Okay. So, good evening and welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, April 1st, 2020. So, before I begin, I just want to remind everyone that this meeting is being held remotely and pursuant to Governor Baker's order of March 10th, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, allowing this meeting to be held virtually. This meeting is being broadcast live on Charter Cable Channel 193. It's also being recorded and will be available for viewing in the next day or so. Tonight, we are also allowing public speak time for those who would like to address the city council. Future city council committee meetings will also be providing public access. The information will be published with each agenda for each meeting. I would like to ask that all non-city personnel remain on mute until it is time for public speak. At that time, I will unmute your microphone, ask you if you would like to speak. If you'd like to say something, please provide your name and address as you always would. And at the conclusion of public speak, you may remain on the line to listen to the city council meeting, but also please remember to remain on mute. If you've joined the meeting in video mode as well as voice mode, once public speak continues, your video will be removed, but you may still remain on the line and listen. We will no longer be able to see your video, but you can still see us. If you run into any technical issues, please let us know via email at the conclusion of the meeting, but I ask that you not interrupt the meeting while it is in progress. This is yet, as we know, in a long series of firsts that we are dealing with over the last several weeks, so I ask you to please be patient while we work through the process. A reminder to city council members, all vote tonight will be roll call votes. And we will now call the city council meeting to order. Barbara, may I please have the roll call?
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
Here and good to see everybody.
Bill Lynch?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Owen Zerrit?
Here.
We will also now do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have four sets of minutes tonight, but because we have a variety of people who were present and not present in meetings, we're going to go through them one by one for individual motions. So, I will take a motion now to approve the minutes for February 5th.
I move we approve February 5th.
Second.
Any further discussion? Barbara, please call the vote.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Bill, we lost you.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Bill Lynch is back.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, unanimous vote, motion passes. Next, we need a motion for February 19th minutes.
I move we approve February 19th minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Barbara, could you please call the vote?
Okay, there were, there were some absences at this one. Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem, you were absent.
Abstain.
Okay. Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Abstain.
Tom Peak, you were absent.
Abstain.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
By a vote of six to three, motion passes. We need now a minute, I'm sorry, on a vote of six to zero with three extensions, motion passes, we now need a motion for March 4th minutes.
Move that March 4th be accepted.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Unanimously, that motion has passed. We'll now take a motion for the March 18th minutes.
I move that we accept March 18th.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Me. Any further discussion? Barbara, could you take the vote?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Great, all right, that motion also passes unanimously. Now would be the portion of the meeting where we are going to allow public speak. I will do my best to call you in the order you came on, but I may not be uber-successful at that, so please be patient, I will get to all of you. I do know these folks were on first, Becca and Lee, Becca Bolofsky and Lee Shore. Do you want to make a public comment?
Yes, I would like to make a comment.
Okay, please just reiterate your name and your address.
Okay, this is Lee Shore, 53 Holyoke Street, Unit 1. I just wanted to make a comment regarding the sharing of information in the city, numbers related to the number of cases in East Hampton with COVID-19. I know there's been some discussion about whether or not the numbers would be helpful. I just wanted to say, I understand that numbers may not be perfectly accurate, but I do feel that if there's a change in the numbers, if there's an upward trend, it's gonna, I think, encourage people to think twice about their activities, about limiting their number of trips to local businesses that could be impacted and ultimately impact all of us. And so, when it comes to transparency and sharing of information, it sounds like there are a lot of people that would appreciate it, myself included. And I'll tell you, maybe the science and the art don't match up, but when it comes to, you know, the psychology of this and understanding that it's an upward trend, that this is something that we're very concerned about, knowledge is power. And, you know, so I feel very strongly that any information that the city has should be shared with us and let people make their own conclusion about how they're gonna use it, but I do feel that it is helpful to know. If I'm asked whether or not I want to know something, I generally want to know. So, if that's, you know, a question that's up for debate at some point, you know, tell me if someone that wants to know. Thanks.
Thanks, Lee. Lee, I'm just gonna take you off video now, if that's all right. Okay, thank you. Let's see. Laura Porter, I will take you off mute. Did you want to make a public comment?
No, I was here to listen.
Okay, great, thank you. Rebecca Pasa, did you want to make a public comment?
Thank you, no, I'm glad to see you all, but I'm just here to listen as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Mike, no last name, did you want to make a public comment? Mike? Okay. We can come back to you. Jay Andrezic, do you want to make a public comment?
Just that, I am shocked that you pronounced my last name correctly. No, thanks, thanks for doing this on Zoom, and I really appreciate the ability to participate like this, but no, I have no, no particular thing to say.
Okay, thanks, Jay. And I believe Rosalyn Heflin, let me, let me unmute you. Go ahead, Rosalyn. Could we have your, your name and your address, please?
Rosalyn Heflin, 64 South Street, Unit 3, and I'm just glad that you're getting this together and you're doing it. I think it's a great thing and it's something, at least something good comes of something terrible, that people can be more connected. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lou Dodge, did you want to make a public comment?
No, thanks, I'm just happy to be here and hear what you have to say, and I'm actually just pleased about East Hampton's handling of, of getting everybody involved. Thanks.
Great. For those of you, I think Rosalyn and Mary Lou, I'm gonna remove your video only because it's really distracting for me, but you'll be able to see all of us and you'll be able to hear us.
Great.
So, give me a second. If my mouse is gonna work correctly. And I think we got it. Okay. What, um, I think I hit everyone that I can see. Is there anyone on the call who I did not get to but would like to make a public comment? You could unmute your phone yourself, I don't see you, but if you'd like to make that a public comment, please go ahead and unmute yourself and identify yourself. All right. That went better than I anticipated. So, now we will move into the communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. Are there any city councillors who would like to make a comment at this time? Tom Peak?
Thank you, Madam President. I might have said something about this the last one, but just this whole thing, I just want to encourage my colleagues as we go through this to sort of bear in mind that while these are extraordinary circumstances, that there are certain populations in our city who, for reasons other than a global pandemic, might regularly have a hard time participating in our civic process. They might have very young children or sick relatives at home, they might have a disability, they might have limited, limited transportation options, and as, as we're learning through all of this, I'm just hoping that we can sort of be thoughtful about how going forward, once this is all over, we might be able to leverage some of these options to be a more inclusive city for people who are in those sorts of situations. I don't have any ideas at the time, but it's something that's been on my mind a lot, and I just encourage you all to sort of be, be thinking about, about that and how we can use the lessons that we learned here to be better at what we do, once it's all over. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else? Omar?
Thank you, Madam President. As a chairman of the public safety, I just wanna ask to the public to please stay home. The crisis that we are suffering in this moment is, is, is real, and my advice to everybody is, please help staying home. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Zerrit, I believe I saw your hand go up earlier?
Yes, President Coniff. I prepared something to say, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for participating in my catharsis. It feels somewhat surreal that a month has gone by since our last live meeting, and here we are for a second tele-meeting. At times, I feel like we're all in a movie, the world's burning, and a dedicated group of people, a high school teacher, the local softball coach, an analyst, a couple realtors, a former health insurance executive, just to name a few, are dedicated to help run their city and keep things moving. Unfortunately, the world is on fire, and here we all are from our different walks of life and different personal situations, gathering again remotely with the help of technology to help serve our little city of 16,000 people. We're doing what we can to help the city function and doing our part to help put out the fire. It's an honor to work with all of you during these unprecedented times. Please let me know how I can be best a resource to you and all the people of East Hampton. Special thanks to the mayor for tirelessly going above and beyond with ongoing work and updates and hitting the constant curveballs thrown her way. Thank you to our health agent, Bree, who has been so very responsive, responsible, and reverent to the situation. Thank you to our law enforcement, fire, and first responders who are finding this now invisible danger and continue to serve the city in the face of even more ongoing threats to their safety. Thank you, President Coniff, for your organization and leadership, holding remote meetings, trainings, ongoing updates, I'm inspired by your work. And thank you to everyone else in our government and beyond, the employees and the residents who have risen to the challenge of combating the international pandemic. The business owner livelihood has been so directly affected by this crisis, our food establishments who have adapted to a system of curbside pickups and delivery, our grocery workers and all those on the front lines of essential businesses, those in non-essential businesses who cannot work, our artists who have to cancel performances, the list goes on. We're all doing our part, we're all helping and suffering together. Please continue to take this seriously, as Councillor Gomez said, maintain social and physical distancing, be safe and smart, and be well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make any comments at this time? Okay. And do we have, I don't have anything, I was going to say some things, but I'm not gonna say anything. Dan, do you have anything from the Vice President?
No, but I'm wondering, I see that Jeff Bag, Jamie Webb are here. If they want to speak, how do you know that they want, they might want to say something as under communication? I'm just curious how that process would work, if Jeff or Jamie are, because they are East Hampton officials.
Good point. Jeff, if you would like to make a comment at this time, if you can unmute yourself and go ahead and make a comment?
Or, or not?
Okay. Jamie, would you like to say anything? Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
Yes, hi. I just want, I was here to listen. Congratulations on your first virtual meeting. I don't have anything to add at this point, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Jamie, same thing, if you would like to make any comments?
I just wanted to say, just here to watch, and thank you for being the, the start, the field test of this new technology.
Happy to do it. Thanks, Jamie. I think that might be it. Jen or Val, do you have anything you'd like to say at this point? No?
Or Bob?
Okay. Okay. Anything, Dan, from you?
No, thank you, Madam President.
We will move on to mayor communications. Mayor LaChapelle, let me do the honors. You are now, wait.
Hello?
There you go.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. You know, first of all, hats off to the city council and President Coniff for putting together a virtual meeting that includes public participation. I wasn't sure how that was gonna happen, and President Coniff stepped up into the void and made it happen, and I regularly recommend her to other cities and towns to help them set these up, and as I understand it, some have taken her up on that, and I encourage all the public boards in East Hampton to check in with President Coniff, because she's really quite the master of this. But beyond President Coniff, you know, I really have to thank all the residents of East Hampton for their cooperation, their understanding, but also their feedback of how things need to work for them during this time, that it seems every hour, something changes, and it seems that way because it does change. School Committee Chair Cindy Kozinski and I just were going back and forth on text, and, and she said something like, you know, "I know you must be swamped," and, you know, my response, you know, quickly off the top of my head was, well, we're all dancing on ice, and as I hit send, I realized, you know, we all, it's all relative, but we all are dancing on ice right now, and it's hard to get the balance. You know, the, what I would say about how COVID-19 is affecting East Hampton, I think we're seeing really strong, you know, the, I don't want to fall too much into cliches, but this idea that we're going to help each other get back up, I think is not true in East Hampton. I think that there is a concerted effort by volunteers and also our city departments and our partners in the community to make sure that everybody continues to stand through this, and we are helping people, and they are helping us to stand together. So, when we see the other end of this and we don't know when it'll end, we're gonna be stronger for it, and it won't be picking people up, it will allow us all to stand higher and keep our city where it deserves, at the, the very best it can be. The impact on East Hampton in a very physical way is that, you know, a lot of our employees at BaseNav and at the schools are working remotely, an overwhelming number of them, as well as in Public Safety Complex and in DPW, where we're doing staggered shifts. I have changed the locks on City Hall and instituted a FOB system, and our employees at City Hall are now staggered, so we don't have more than 10 people in the whole building. And both the police and fire have changed their staffing patterns to keep folks apart as much as possible, as well as the Department of Public Works are also doing half shifts, covering all the essential needs of, of the city and, and some quite large projects. The Health Department, our health agent, Bree, has been amazing, and the, the learning curve has been very sharp for all of us, but Bree has just not backed down at all, and has not only stood up to the challenges in front of her in East Hampton, but has done an amazing job of gathering regional resources for us and partnering very quickly with communities so we can maximize the dollars, the early dollars that we're getting now, to address public health concerns, as well as get supplies in a way that, that's truly outstanding. Overall, our PPEs, we're doing well, but more importantly, our public health agent, our fire chief, our police chief, our emergency operations commander, W Chief Wayne Heniman, have already got the networks going to keep that supply where we need it to be and not lose out on any opportunity to keep our first responders safe. And our first responders now have, have increased. Those on the front line include folks at the Council on Aging, who are making sure our seniors are getting their medicine and their food, folks who are in dispatch, and they're really, right now, dispatch is the, the place where every interface with the city begins and ends, it seems, from, from mail to, you know, picking up key pieces of information, mail for our different departments. And those are all concerns that are ongoing, and they get more intense really every day, if, if not every hour. Our state government and federal government have been great partners, and with this, I'll, I'll kind of digress a little bit, but I want to address Lee's concern around the numbers and the information. So, the information the city has about the number of cases in East Hampton, or the, the spread or the curve, we have the same resources that you do. So, we go to the CDC website, we go to the health, the World Health Organization website, and we go to mass.gov, and in my daily report, there is a link specific to the day, and you can click on that, and the information you see on that link from the mass.gov COVID-19 website is the exact information I get in an email. I have thought, I did for a couple of days, put the number of cases into the daily report and realized it was, it was just a sliver of a number that I got from a public document, and it didn't paint the picture. The number of cases in East Hampton don't paint the full effect of this pandemic on East Hampton, because it does not include people who work or worked in East Hampton, and what drain it might be on one of our public safety departments as someone is recuperating or struggling with COVID-19, it also does not affect workers or who might be in our community actively shedding the, the virus and not knowing. The full context of the numbers, the number of cases, the number of recoveries, the number of fatalities, the upward curve as far as tests are best told by those who devote their life to it, the statisticians and the modelers of such pandemics, and that can be found, again, on the CDC website, the World Health Organization website, and mass.gov. I feel like the, the information that East Hampton can do best and I can provide best while running the city and having the department standpoint, it is really to, to distill those numbers down into the each department and also the, the wants and needs of the residents. How does that affect East Hampton? How does the regulations on the governor's level as federal level, and then also our local Board of Health's level, what does that do to core essential services? So, that's, you know, one of the reasons why I don't report the numbers or un-numbers, I'm not hiding numbers. What I am, what am I doing is, is getting people to the best possible information. There's a lot of skewing, well-intended and ill-intended sharing of informations and statistics, models, curve of infection. I think that Dr. Burke said it best yesterday at the president's press briefing, is that there is no vaccine for COVID-19, there is no treatment for COVID-19, there are behavior change. This is all about behaviors. And while testing and folks being tested after they've recovered are certainly helpful and informative, right now, right now, what we could do is follow those five steps that are just so basic, they don't feel like they'll really do anything but washing your hands, sneezing into your elbow, staying home, you know, is, is just key. Moving from there, I just want to also thank the community volunteerism and the quality of the volunteers who truly understand how to help without endangering those who they are helping and themselves is exceptional. I know that the Council on Aging has really benefited for this. We have residents who have access to making hand sanitizer and delivering it for free to seniors and others who need it, the food organizations, and the help for the community center. Not sure how many people are aware, but the North Hampton Survival Center had to shut down because of infection and our community center, but also just, you know, your average walking up and down Cottont Street person, they've banded together to make sure people have food, they know where to get food. Our school food program has radically changed its delivery system of, rather than having people come to one location and no other options, you now can call 413-575-1565 and have your meals, school meals, delivered, and this is open to any person in East Hampton, 0 to 18 years old, and again, you could call 413-575-1565 and ask for the delivery to continue of those meals, or to get on that delivery, on that delivery list, and the, the food comes three times a week, but every time they deliver food, you get it for the two days, so you're getting a week's full of, of food for your, your young people in the house. The, also, I would just kind of go back to basic services. We, it, it's just a rapid, rapid change. We shut down City Hall pretty early, the Board of Health, and I fully support their rapid action to limiting public interface with the government and public interface with themselves. I think it has done us good, to say the least, and I think that East Hampton is definitely a part of the solution here and changing behaviors, and I'm very proud of that. How our city departments are working, you know, at first, it was extremely essential functions. I'm trying not to laugh, because I'm, I'm looking out my window, and my two dogs are just losing it, and it, okay. So, I decided to say that out loud, so I wouldn't laugh the whole way through, this is very serious stuff. So, you know, our departments basically work with my office to put together a schedule of what needed to get done, what could wait. Of course, after one week of this, you know, what could wait, that, that amount of tasks just shrunk, we, we need to, to do stuff. Each department head really showed leadership and worked with our IT department, Ashley Barstow, who is amazing, to put, I would say, at least 80% of our basic functions, not just essential, basic functions of our departments, remote. So, we have to the point where folks can dial and answer, dial back to constituents and businesses from their work number at their house, that there are virtual modelings of what is on their desktop. that there are virtual modelings of what is on their desktop at work at their home. And then each department has selected somebody who can come in and do the functions that absolutely cannot be done remotely. The instant effect and result of this is that the city financially is on the same schedule it always has. And these technologies that we have put together and this network that we have put together, of course, is fantastic and it just gets better and better during the pandemic. But after the pandemic, these efficiencies, it's changed the behavior of how City Hall operates. And it's much more efficient and it's much more transparent and the records are kept much more organized for the departments, every department to access what they need to get their job done. And we anticipate more of that. How that affects the budget process, I am extremely committed. And talking with the auditor and the treasurer, who I think are still on in this meeting, my plan is to have a budget for fiscal year 2021 to be presented to council the first meeting in May. And I would ask and have really valued the conversations I've had back and forth with members of the council and President Coniff about council commitment to that, even if it would take, you know, an extra meeting in June. I think it's very important that we deliver the budget. I think it's important and we owe it to the city to deliver a budget, balanced budget by June 30th. And we can do that. We started our budget process early this year. The budget is even tighter than I kept saying six months ago it was gonna be, but we can get it done. And we need to walk into fiscal year 2021 really knowing and being able to look residents in each other in the eyes and know where we stand financially. We've put a lot of long-term plans into effect, stabilization accounts and use of cannabis revenue, our capital improvement, our school project. And in the face of something so short-term and so devastating, we can't forget where we want to be in 20 years. And I believe producing a budget by the end of this fiscal year with, sure, we might have to look at it in the fall, but we look, we look every quarter at the budget and make appropriations and make shift in spending. And that's how, sure, it's a little tighter, it's a little iceier than it's ever been in the history of the city and when we were a town. But it serves our city and our residents the best to deliver a budget to them that is balanced and do so before the fiscal year. A quick update on finances, our right now cash flow and finances and the impact of COVID-19. We're telling that, being very careful to tag all expenses and requests that are connected to COVID-19 in our financial systems now. Chief Modder and Deputy Chief Heniman have been through this before with FEMA and MEMA. And we're also getting excellent advice from the Department of Local Services and DOR of how to tag these expenses. So when we can go back for reimbursement, we can do so very organized and quickly. We want to be the first in the door for those dollars. And right now, the cash flow is not being impacted, but we are watching it. And we're only a couple of weeks in. So I will keep you updated of how that, how that expense affects our bottom line and cash flow. Our auditor Val Bernier, our treasurer Jen Gallant have been excellent, you know, communicating with the teams, but also each other about, you know, where we are financially and what we can do and being really innovative and thinking out of the box when we're all tens of miles apart. It's a little surreal, but it's working. And the last update I would provide is about our building projects. So specifically the new school, One Ferry Street and Route 10, the turn lane by River Valley Market, the River Valley Market. So construction is considered an essential business and the relating companies, small businesses that support construction are essential. I've talked to the Lieutenant Governor, as well as contractors, developers and laborers on these sites. And we're working with the building inspector as well as the health agent to make sure that those projects can and do meet the safety guidelines and the safety plans that we need to see as a city. So everyone is safe on those sites. We are following state guidelines and anticipate the work on these three projects will continue. We just opened the bids for Route 10 Turning Lane. It's another MassWorks project. It came in quite nice at 346. We're very happy to see that price. We weren't sure what was going to happen with the just economic situation we're in now. And, but we are pushing forward and we're pushing forward with the blessing of the state and they, too, Sean Cronin and Lieutenant Governor Polito have been just excellent, really just excellent partners with us. I would also just quickly say around updates on projects and tax credits and whatnot. Big shout out to Senators Warren and Markey and Congressman Neal. Just, I mean, to be able to get onto the phone with the three of them and say, look, this is what East Hampton needs, like, great, you know, we want infrastructure and we want this. It's like, I need to hand out to 16,000 people for various reasons a check. Like, they need to open their bank accounts and they need to see money in it to live. Like, that's what, that's what we need. And to see this for stimulus bill, put money in people's bank accounts is good. Is it enough? No. We need more. But that's been really helpful and they've been really helpful understanding how there are jobs that can be done safely, that keep money in people's bank accounts, well-deserved. And we know when we have to change the course and maybe shut down a job, if that does happen, they know, we know that there's still money coming into their households. I'm super grateful for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Rist.
Mayor, first I'd like to say happy birthday. You went away.
I did. I put my head down. Thank you, Counselor Rist.
One thing I did ask yesterday when we were talking finances is, how do we sign documents? I know that all these appropriations, when they're approved, have all the counselors sign them. Has Ashley been able to get us the digital document signing? Is that all set?
It is all set DocuSign and we've got the encrypted professional version and that is in place. We've used it for this week's warrant and also for me to sign off on bid acceptance on the Route 10 project. So it is working well and it's very easy to do. The nice thing is that there are multiple layers of affirmation that the document was executed to those who signed it, but also the ones who sent it.
So I assume that Barbara will send us these documents that we approved to be signed?
That's my understanding, but I'm going to defer to Barbara where she is in that process. This is week one of the trial, so I'll defer. That's the hope.
On April 15th, I'm about to set some public hearings. We're gonna need to sign things.
Yes. I would also say, Counselor Rist, I hope that this is the first and last birthday I ever have during a pandemic.
Me too.
It feels like an attainable goal.
I think so. I feel good. I feel good.
Are there any other counselors who would have any questions for the mayor? Counselor Kuzinski.
Mayor, first of all, let me thank you so very much for your hard effort in this process and all your work. I see it in all the emails, all the communications with the Health Department and the other departments, and the ones that I've seen with the other departments. And I just want to be sure that you take good care of yourself because we need you during this time. You're doing a great job. Thank you so very much. That being said, I was wondering if during, the whole purpose of our being at home, our being of social distancing, what people are calling social distancing, is to really have physical distance between people so that the aerosolized breath, any droplets do not come in contact with one another in the world. And it's our jobs all to do that. What concerns me in some ways is the question, do you think there's any other efforts that we can do? I know when I traveled to Northampton yesterday, drove by a public park, there were probably about 20 kids in the park, some separate from one another, sitting on rocks. Others were playing in the play gyms on surfaces. And from everything that I've heard, those surfaces will carry the germ, the bacteria, the virus. What are we doing? Are our public parks posted? Can we post them? Maybe they have been already to stay away from those areas. Maybe you could speak to that briefly.
Yes, so our parks are closed. Our playgrounds are closed. There's ropes and signs and some A-frame signs saying playground closed. The playing fields are closed. Just today, we actually got a picture, a screenshot of someone playing softball, a league from not in East Hampton playing softball in one of our fields. And the health agent literally got in her car and drove down there. And there, you know, the gates to Northampton Park are closed. And some people think that that's anti-ethical to people getting fresh air and whatnot. But Counselor Kuzinski, I mean, you said it perfectly right, droplets. You know, so we can say with good assurance that playgrounds and jungle gym and play equipment, definitely the virus can stay there. And you can make a reasonable guess of how long, but nobody can give us a hard and fast rule. And we're not gonna go and, you know, sanitize them and can't even do it efficiently. So those are closed. And the other is, you know, when we're asking questions of DPH and whatnot of like the droplets and somebody sneezes and how far, we're getting from top experts, the answer, I don't know. But is it possible? We're like, is it possible? Like, is six to, you know, and we're getting, I mean, there are a lot of heartfelt candid conversations about not knowing. So if we don't know, we're shutting it down. I mean, that's, you know, I think probably the health agent and our Board of Health. I mean, Maggie Hebert as the chair and Amy and Jen are just rock stars. They are so blooming on it. I don't know if any of them will talk to me after I've appointed them to that board or you guys, because you said they could be there, but they're doing a great job. But yeah, so we're, you know, we're physically on it. We're going back to convenience stores all the time or your signs up. When we're seeing people congregate, I'm encouraging people politely and nicely to remind that group of people of saying, hey, you know, this isn't just about you guys. It's about everybody. And ask them to break it up. I would also just want to say something else that I think is remarkable. And Counselor Kuzinski, you just kind of reminded me of it. So we are, you know, in the middle of a pandemic and pulling together our government and going forward and making commitment to continue public participation. But constituents' needs that are not related to COVID-19 are still being answered. And I think, Counselor, you know what I'm talking about with what might be going up on the Northampton landfill property and what's going on with some some of the animals up there. And I think it's very notable and I know you're not the only person who is doing this. But our council is being responsive to, you know, things that are still really important that, you know, COVID-19 doesn't affect, but need addressing and deserve addressing. And I would just say, you know, to the council and in particular to that very unusual problem, you know, kudos. I mean, people, you know, government can't stop. It's a little stunted or no, stilted. It's kind of like, you know, we're not as smooth, but it's a new day. It's a new way to govern. And I feel like we're responding.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, JP, one second. We're gonna go around and let everybody ask a question. Counselor Derby?
You saw my hand.
I did.
Oh, great. So I just wanted to say, you know, I've been walking around East Hampton and one of the things I noticed was today that they have sealed off all the basketball hoops. And to point out the difference between playing pickup basketball with strangers and going out for a walk with your family, getting some fresh air and getting some exercise, as long as you maintain social distancing, I think it's important to recognize the difference between those two things. And congregating with a group of people is something that should not be done. But getting out, getting some fresh air while maintaining social distancing, I think is something that we don't want to discourage. And I did notice that when the health agent sent out the thing about Parks and Rec, closing the parks, that there is a fine for repeat offenders. I do believe I read that. So it's something that does have some teeth and I think that's important to recognize.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. I also want to make the comment as well as a point of clarification for the public. And I know, Mayor, you said that the parks are closed, but I echo what Counselor Derby said is that they are closed for gatherings, but not for the public space in the open space.
Right. Yes.
That you can walk the trails, you can, as long as you don't have 40 people all jammed together, you can walk the trails, as Counselor Derby said, get out with your family, walk them. We're just closing down the playgrounds, the basketball hoops, the tennis courts, the ball fields, all those kinds of things. But you still, I don't want people to get the impression that we've closed down.
No, very, very good point. Thank you. Yes, the open spaces, we want people to enjoy those spaces. We've worked really hard to protect them and to create them. You're absolutely right.
Any other questions of the mayor? Many hands. Counselor Rist, I saw yours first. You're on mute.
I would just like to ask, and maybe since Bob Alberry is still on, who's enforcing the health agent's requirements? Because I think we should be really strict about this stuff. You see a group of people congregating, even if they're kids. Is that the police department's job or is it gonna be the health agent to have to go out and find these people? I'm curious about enforcement because I think it's such a serious thing and some people aren't taking it seriously. So Bob, what do you think of that?
Well, good evening. It's a tiered system with the health agent, the Health Department. We're getting calls regularly into our dispatch center about people congregating. We advise the health agent and the Board of Health. And to somebody's point earlier, they would initially verbal warning, then a fine schedule, and then there's some, you know, criminal enforcement if it came to that, that we have the ability to do. I know it's gotten to that point down in New York, but certainly we're not at that point. Pretty much when we tell people to disperse, they're pretty good about it. And we've done it a couple of businesses too, at the bequest of the health agent.
Thank you, Bob.
Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy birthday, Mayor. I have a few, I have a few things. First, I think this crisis is really important to have all the department heads on board. And I have a concern about DPW because Joe is supposed to retire soon. If he's going to retire soon, who's gonna be in charge? And from BPW, is any guidance or anything about the disposal of the glove or wipes or anything? They cannot clog the water pipes or whatever, something like that. Is anything from them to the constituents or the public? A guidance to please, if you're gonna discharge something, please do it the right way?
Yes, so, thank you for the birthday wish. So Director Pipchinsky's last day is April 6th. He's retiring. Today is actually his 35th year of work with the city, his anniversary. And we have been preparing for the transition of his retirement. The idea was to actually start a search about a month ago or so. And with the pandemic, I had put out that or any major position I was going to work within the department and not post formally for those important positions until we were not at a stay-at-home or have a stay-at-home order. So we could have, you know, get to know candidates and meet in person and be able to visit work sites. I met by the phone, over the phone today with Director Pipchinsky and also talked to representatives of the DPW Union about what happens next and transitions. The director has parsed up his jobs and major projects to each, to some within the office, some within each department to take on a piece that they know best. As a result, none of the major projects are going to be delayed. As a result, none of the major projects are going to be delayed. Um, and we will also, he's also set up some additional paving to be done, um, with some leftover paving contracts, like we do every spring. We kinda have that list of, of, um, of roads that we can kinda take care of small parts of it. Um, we're, the out, the outfill, um, pipe is, that project is still going right ahead. Um, and we're working with our consultants. We're looking at the roots in the pipe, um, on either side of the break. And, and I think we're gonna have some opportunity to fix some stuff. We're waiting for some more detail. Um, Tom Malsbury, the chair of the Board of Public Works, is well aware of, of course, uh, Joe's retirement. And I'll be working with him on the larger projects, including the public hearing around rates, um, and getting a handle on financial picture going forward. Um, so it's not the best time to lose a major department head. Um, but we've got a plan, um, to go forward and to not, um, not hastily jump i- into it. I think that that's like the urgency we're all feeling to make things better or take care of everything. Um, it, you know, it, with that urgent, you know, with, with that urgent feeling, um, what I'm trying to do is take a, a deep breath, you know? Um, uh, seven, seven seconds in breath, nine seconds out breath, um, before I'm jumping in trying to fix things and finding the departments are very capable, um, for, for pulling things together and holding them forward.
Thank you, councillor Gomez. Thank you, mayor. Uh, councillor Zaret, I think I saw your name and your hand.
Thank you. I also used the raise hand function earlier too. Thank you for teaching me that.
Very proud of you.
Uh, mayor, of course, happy birthday.
Thank you.
I would have sang earlier had I known, but, um, there's time for that some other time. Um.
I'll just go on the record. I, like, the fact that so many people know it's my birthday and that I'm on camera right now, that, like, yeah, that, that's surreal unto itself, but thank you, everybody, for well wishes. I appreciate it.
I mean, there's a guitar in like six feet of me, so anyhow. Um, thank you. I'll, I wanna echo what my colleague said. I mean, this is a severe health crisis and
Yeah.
it's no time to relax with policy. And I think that, you know, I'll say for myself, and I think it's clear from everyone else here, I a hundred percent support anything that is going to facilitate flattening the curve and getting us out of this crisis any sooner. So the policies in the parks, um, any policies that are more stringent, uh, with our health department, I think we need it. Uh, you know, unfortunate, it's not, and in this case, I don't think these measures are draconian. I mean, any type of gathering, even well-intentioned, uh, with too many people and too close can potentiate the, the progress of, uh, this, this outbreak. Um, so thank you for embracing, um, those and all the work you've been doing. Um, I did wanna ask if either coming from the state or within the city itself, um, I, I can't imagine this happening in East Hampton, but we saw it happen today in Worcester, where they're using, um, facilities, uh, in, in other cities, in, in this case Worcester, to set up kind of mobile treatment centers and things like that. Um, unfortunately, Fitchburg has set up a morgue, um, i- in using, uh, facilities from Fitchburg State. Are there any plans in place? Let's say that things really got out of hand, although fortunately, right now, it looks like things are reasonably under control. Uh, is there, are there plans? For instance, if we had to set up some sort of mobile facility via, uh, organizations like FEMA or the National Guard, for instance, have we identified what, what we would use in the city?
Um, yes, so already, we have a couple of regional partnerships going on right now. Uh, one is with the Board of Health and backup support for our public health nursing. Um, so when we have cases that, well, I mean, Maven system is confidential. The public nurse finds out, and then they track the cases within East Hampton. So we renegotiated a contract in the last week where North Hampton and several other smaller towns, we've all combined our, our MEMA money, um, and have a fuller complement of public health professionals to manage cases in East Hampton around the region. Uh, North Hampton also, it's a regional shelter for those, um, who are homeless and need a safe place to stay during this pandemic, and East Hampton participates in that as well. Um, the need for a mobile treatment center or, I, yeah, I can't believe that we're saying morgue, but morgue in the city, um, falls under our, um, continuity of government plan, but also our emergency, um, regional plans that are headed up right now by the chief and deputy chief in fire, uh, where if, um, someone was to fall ill, if we had, um, folks who could not go home or needed self-isolation, it would run into our regional emergency plans that are, are set up. Um, and we practice all the time. East Hampton is, um, and our, our public safety, our firefighters, um, and police are very active in that, um, in those organizations and those plans for our region. So we are, um, certainly scrambling, but we know where our resources and plans, we practice our plans in, um, you know, for mobilizing, um, regional emergency treatment and, um, and supplies. And our staff are really well-trained. So it's not about looking on for a certain resource. In a lot of instances, it's about activating. And, and we've started that, that regional system, um, has been activated, and our chiefs, um, and associated personnel are already, uh, talking and getting ready and mobilizing. So, um, for, for me, I would be, it's, it's just gonna be the numbers, right? So you plan, um, and you do your worst-case scenario, um, and, and just the enormity of this. And I know councillor Zaret, you see this, um, at your workplace all the time. And I, I commend and, and have so much respect, um, for you every day, getting in that truck and go over the mountain to, to Huyock Medical Center. Thank you very much. Um, a type of frontline I'm sure you never imagined you'd be at, but, um, we're, it, it's gonna be the, yeah, it's gonna be the numbers. I, I feel good about the resources we have, but the don't know and the numbers are really, are really scary. I mean, I, I can't, yeah, are, are scary. And, um, uh, along that, let me just, um, put a comment on top of councillor Zaret's comment. How about that? Um, our, our flags in the city, our city flags in the city are at half-staff, um, from today through April 8th, um, to honor, uh, the now fifteen dead at the Huyock Soldiers' Home. So when we're talking about numbers and what they do to East Hampton and how they affect East Hampton, um, we have lost soldiers and sailors, uh, to COVID-19, um, in Huyock, at the Huyock Center, uh, Huyock Soldiers', um, home, where we definitely have East Hampton residents. But more importantly, we have, um, frontline healthcare workers there that live in East Hampton who are exposed. It's hard to track it all. Um, but, but our flags are flying at half-staff at the, the bequest and, um, organization of our new vet agent, Michael Slater, um, to honor those who, who we've lost. And right before we got onto this meeting, the, the death toll there went to fifteen.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, councillor Rothschild, you're on mute.
I'm unmuting myself.
There you go.
Um, thank you, everyone, and thank you, mayor, and thank you, all the department heads and fellow councillors. Um, I feel, as usual, good to be in East Hampton. I feel like we are rallying around and helping each other and thinking of, um, those most vulnerable. And I guess my question is about those most vulnerable. Um, I hear that the schools are doing a good job of feeding people, the community center. We've talked about people with disabilities. Um, I'm just wondering, mayor, or anyone else that might know, what needs are we seeing that we're not meeting? Like, that we're feeling like we need to meet? And I'm concerned about mental health issues and maybe a surge in, I don't know, maybe, is there a surge in drug overdoses or drug calls, things like that? So I'm just wondering what, what other needs we're gonna need to be addressing and looking out for each other about.
So I would, um, I certainly have some information to share. I don't know if Chief Alberti is still on the call, but maybe he could speak to what he's seeing in police log and, and call volume. I mean, I have a very top line, but, but he could kinda give maybe some details. I'm not sure if he is still with us on the call.
He is.
Yes, so if he could speak to that, and then I can fill in from there.
So our call volume, uh, both, uh, fortunately, both for police and fire, our call volume, uh, has dropped significantly. So the majority of the people, uh, in the community are doing what they're supposed to be, staying home. Uh, we can't emphasize that enough, stay home, stay home, stay home. Um, do it for yourselves, your families, your community, and your first responders. Um, to that end, uh, we have not had an uptick in overdoses, um, which could be concerning, um, in that we steadily, we had overdoses, um, regularly, um, either daily or, or weekly or every other day. Um, but the fear is, and we talked about this today at a, at a staff meeting, the fear is that people are home alone. Um, so they may or may not have the ability to, um, have access to Narcan or Narcan themselves or, or, or to that, to that, to that. Uh, one of the concerns, and it's actually been a public concern, um, and I've read it a couple of times now, um, in my chief threads and, uh, some in the media, is, um, a real concern. And one thing that we have, and it's, it kinda dovetails in, and one thing that we have seen an uptick in is domestics. Um, with everybody saying at home, uh, it's like Thanksgiving dinner. And I've been wanting to tell you this for ten years kind of thing. Um, so we have had, we've had an uptick in domestics, but, um, nothing, nothing major. Um, we're trying to handle as much as we can over the phone. We reduced our staffing to a minimum manning. Uh, we're trying not to make contact. Uh, we are going on medical calls with the fire department, uh, so we do have, uh, a significant amount of exposure. And a lot of those calls, we get there before the fire department does. Um, and we, we've had a couple of life and death situations, uh, already, uh, that we have to go in. So we, there's been some, been some concern about, um, exposure around that. But fortunately, the, the calls for service are down. Um, so I'm happy to report that, because people are staying home and doing what they're supposed to be doing, and hopefully it continues. Did I answer your question, councillor?
Yes, thank you. I was interested in that. And I actually had, was wondering about the domestic, um, domestic calls, if those would go up. And just in, I guess my other part of the question
Yeah.
about needs that we see on the horizon or needs not being met.
Sure. So, um, mental health is a big concern, um, for, uh, I was just, um, uh, earlier today, I was on a call with the Healthy Youth Coalition. Um, and it was really interesting to hear that public health perspective. And Sue Wilson from the high school team was on. And, and what they're seeing through the schools is that parents and adults are struggling with, with just the enormity of the situation, anxiety and stress. Um, it hasn't yet hit the kids. Um, and so Healthy Youth Coalition and Sue were talking about River Valley Counseling, which are in our public schools, doing a great job to continue to reach out and check in, um, with folks as well. Um, we just spoke on the phone about, um, how maybe the city can look for some COVID-19 money or we can augment Healthy Youth Coalition and some outreach virtually. Um, the Center for Human Development, CHD, has just started to put out an online mental health check-in, um, for folks. And the state has, um, it's a buoy health, and it's online. And, and one, it's just to check if you should get tested for COVID-19, but it's also a resource to connect, um, with some mental health, um, support. Uh, the, the continuing needs, um, I think will be mental health and behavioral support. I don't think that goes away, and I think it gets more intense. Um, you know, I think that there are those who, when this settles in, um, will affect them more deeply. And, and so it's, it'll be a new need, but it's, it, for them, or a different level of need. But, but that's just not gonna go away. And how to process that individually with somebody online is one thing. But, you know, to have that social support, and those folks who don't, you know, maybe they have a computer, hm, but they don't have, um, the ability or capability to be on Zoom. You know, so Charter Spectrum have, has offered, you know, to families, um, and, and to residents, ninety days, I think, of free internet, um, but still you have to have the equipment. So I think that there's an underlying technology need, um, um, there as well. Uh, what's surfacing, um, now, um, is, you know, so many people in the city, um, today, April 1st, the beginning of the month, right? Um, it's rent, food or, or medicine. And that's, that's real, not only for, you know, those people that, you know, you think you know where they live. Um, that's, that's true for everybody's neighborhood. Look out your window and, you know, um, the assumption that if you make, you know, a certain amount of money or you drive a certain amount of car, this doesn't hit you. So many people are living check-to-check. Um, you know, last month, maybe you paid your kid's college tuition, and then this month, you don't know if you're making a mortgage and, and, uh, programs and support. That's, that's huge. Um, renters, you know, just having to say to their landlords, um, you know, they can't make rent. I'm grateful that the state has backed up, um, our, um, want of, you can't evict somebody right now. You can't turn off their utilities right now. But again, we need to help each other stand up right now through this. So when it's over, there's, there's, you know, the gap that this, you know, three to four month or whatever it is, you know, it can't be filled. It's not, not at the end of this, you get the, the rent check to, to back pay. Um, that said, local banks and even the big banks have been really great about, um, giving land owners, uh, mortgage holders, um, a reprieve from paying their mortgage and just putting it at the back, or you can renegotiate the terms. Um, I know of landlords who are saying, don't worry about the rent. It's, you know, we're gonna figure it out, like, take that stress off your plate. But then you get to the point of, okay, they don't have to pay the rent, they have to buy food. Um, and they, you know, you've got two people and they're working, you know, in total four jobs. And of those four jobs, three of them are service industry. So it's, you know, getting people on unemployment, reminding them that it's not typical unemployment anymore, that the, it's very flexible. You know, gig economy, ten ninety-nine, um, uh, tip servers, all should apply for unemployment. They should do it right now. And, and that's also how the federal government is going to, um, uh, figure out where you are to get you the extra unemployment insurance, um, that the new stimulus bill is gonna provide, as well as the twelve-hundred-dollar immediate payment. It will be through unemployment. It will be through those who have filed their taxes, uh, last year. It'll be through their Medicaid, um, accounts. Uh, and, and to keep, you know, just talking to everybody about, over and over again. It's kinda like, there are five things we can do to change public behavior, plus social distancing, and those words of unemployment, those words of, of checking in with mental health, um, resources. And again, it's the other reason why I'm putting links on my daily report and on the website and not too much words, because it changes. I mean, it completely changes all the time. They've just expanded, um, who can get unemployment, because there's a need. So, uh, rent and mortgage is huge, and then basic bills. And we're coming to the realization, I want everybody to hear it. Um, it is wonderful that these, the utilities and, and different mortgage lenders are, and hopefully more and more landlords are giving people the break they need, but they're not taking that financial burden off the plate, right? We're only doing it right now. We're, we're helping people stand, and we already are, need to start thinking, and I think that work comes in the subcommittees, of, of what are we gonna do when this is done? That people just don't fault. We've gotta remember that this is not a behavior change for the next six months. This is actually a new, um, public health and economic reality where we all need to stand, ironically, a little closer together. Um, and, and what are, what are we gonna do about that as a city?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, any other councillors have any other questions for the mayor? Uh, councillor Peak?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, mayor. And, uh, this has all been fascinating. Um, I was just wondering, uh, on, on the other side of it, obviously, uh, a lot of our, uh, businesses, a lot of our small businesses are trying to figure this out. Um, I guess, wha- what, uh, what's currently being done to help connect, uh, those to the resources that might be available through the state and the federal government?
Yeah.
And, um, i- is there anything that, that really should be done? Is there anything that other communities are doing that we should look at? Is, is the chamber, um, providing any resources that you're aware of? I mean, just kind of in general, uh,
Yeah.
about what we can do to make sure that our downtown bounces back?
So, um, what, so I, I, you know, there's So, um, so I, you know, there's some key things. So I think, one, on, you know, unemployment insurance, everybody should apply. If you own a small business and you don't have income per se, apply for unemployment. Because there is a benefit there. I mean, I'm not saying it's replacement, but it's something, and it gets you in a track for when more money comes down, like that $600 payment from unemployment, that $1,200 check, every penny counts now, and it gets people into the system and it gets people money into their accounts. For small businesses in particular, the state has started a couple of programs. One is a loan program that was for capital expense. Everything helps. It was concerning for me as a mayor of East Hampton and our little downtown, because if you are, you know, just pick one of our small businesses and, and the help is a loan, you know, if you're making, if your sales are under $300,000, adding another loan, another debt payment, doesn't really help. There is now programs, small grant programs and forgivable loans on the state and soon to be federal level, where small businesses can apply, and that can be to replace the business owner's income, payments, your insurance, you know, you know, paying down an account you thought you were going to have money for, for, you know, supplies that you've ordered or your retail stock. And those, those programs, I'm, we're just getting the word out because they literally were just created in the last four days. And, you know, I try to get them all. So what, the chamber is also getting together resources and blasting those out as they come their way. Small Business Administration seems to be, is going to be a focal point of these forgiveness loans. That's what, what I just saw today. As far as something directly on the city level, I am certainly looking at things, it is a really tricky, delicate balance of how do we help people with rent, with mortgage, with food, lost transportation, or the need for daycare, and, and not blow up our budget? And, and what do we do? And I'm very keen to understand that this is a tremendous, immediate, intermediate, and long-term impact on East Hampton, and what part of that do we use of our financial resources to help those, those folks in our, in our city? There are a couple of ideas that I know are just circulating around the use of CPA money and housing rent relief. It can be done. I know Counselor Rist is looking into that with, with Jamie Webb, and, and they're long processes. I mean, I, I, some would say it's not enough fast enough, and I, I would correct them and say, oh, no, no. Like, rent relief is going to be needed for the next five years. Like, you know, just, I'm sure Counselor Pink, you, you could probably do the projections for every week of this pandemic, you know, the number of years it will affect or the number of months. So we're also, I'm looking into a couple of other funding mechanisms bigger cities are using for help. And, and I, I want to look at everything, and I'm going to look at everything, but we also have to realize, our budget has always been very tight, it continues to be even tighter. It's what has actually helped East Hampton get to the place it is. And the question, I don't have a lot of extra resources, we don't have a lot of extra money to build small business loan funds, but maybe there's something that we can do or figure out, something that we can do and administer. So, you know, I'm open to ideas, and I've been, you know, reading that, a lot of that at night, you know, and getting every dollar back we can from MEMA and PEMA over the next few years for this, to make sure that our core services aren't, you know, minimized because we're waiting on reimbursement and that we're spending the money for you early. But, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Counselor Kuzinski, I know you, you will circle back to you. Go ahead. Can you unmute yourself, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I just wanted to share with you, and you may very well be aware of this, I think you'll agree that testing eventually will be the thing that helps to stop this pandemic when everyone knows whether they have the virus. We can self-test and a quick self-test. But while we wait to get to that point, I wanted everyone to at least be able to talk to their constituents and the people that they see on the streets. Iceland today came out with a report, Iceland had tested everyone in the country of Iceland. It's about 350,000 people in Iceland. And of those who tested positive, they reported that 50% did not know they had the virus. They were not having any symptoms at all. And I mention this because of the importance, it was, we talked about the parks, as we talked about interactions. I see folks say, well, geez, my friend has been isolated away for 10 or 14 days, I can go play with them. They may not even know that they have the virus. That is a critical piece, and I know we have to all do our part. I thank you for all your work again.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, well heard, Counselor Kuzinski. I mean, I think the, you know, and the testing, I mean, there, there's a couple of different, I mean, right now, it's testing to see who is positive and who is negative, but also, you know, once we're a little down there, and I know folks with much larger brains than I, the test of afterwards, and, and if, you know, if they're immune, if they're not, and trying to track it down is so important. Again, this is all such moving targets. You know, I go back to, we need to focus on those behaviors. And I've written this a couple of times, and I've said it aloud a couple of times. But to your point, you know, other than reducing the amount of infections and casualties, you know, the best result here is to say that, that we overreacted to this and not underreacted. And, and to say something so dire and dramatic, you know, it is not just kind of clickbait on the internet, it's, it's what we're looking at. And, and if folks didn't think that two weeks ago, you know, more thinking at this, but, but everybody, we've got to be on the same page. And I, you know, I think that the tragedy at the Soldier's Home really, you know, brought that home. It's, it's, it's really about, let's overreact, let's just keep overreacting, and we will have fewer people in makeshift morgues.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Derby? And we'll make this, I was going to say, we'll make this the last question, but I see somebody else's hand up. So go ahead, Counselor.
I can be quick. I just want to say, you know, as a, as a business owner in East Hampton, who's had to send 19 employees home without any sort of recourse to pay them and had to drop off a rent check today, I think this is, this is a really major event for people that own small business. Appreciate the mayor's thoughts and comments, and Tom Peak's.
Where did you say?
Really great place to go. Oh, can you hear me?
Cut out, yeah, you cut out for a second.
Okay. Okay. Place to go for information, SBA.gov. And, you know, all of this is kind of changing pretty quickly, so now independent contractors, people that work for themselves can now apply for unemployment. And a week ago, they couldn't. And so I think that's important to, to make sure we get out there, that everybody, even people that work for themselves, can now apply for unemployment. So I just wanted to make sure that that got said.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. Counselor Zaret, I did see your hand go up.
I just want to correct for the record, while the, the general, there was some generally correct data that Counselor Kuzinski offered that, that we, there may be, well, it may be being established that there's a high percentage of individuals who are carriers of the virus that do not present with symptoms. Iceland has not tested their entire population, they've tested maybe 5% of their population. Also, from, as a health provider, healthcare provider, from my understanding, and other people can correct me if I'm wrong, it's not well established yet, and this just goes, this is a public meeting, so I just want to clarify what we're putting on the record here, is not well established yet what the broad role of widespread testing is or how that could be used as a tool going forward. So I just wanted to put that out there. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Zaret. Anyone else have any questions for the mayor on her birthday?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I will just say, I never thought, or maybe mayors mostly never thought, that they would say to the city council, I can't wait to see you all in person. I can't.
Thank you, Mayor. We as well. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to our reports of standing committees, and we'll start with Finance and Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Madam President. We will have a virtual meeting, a Zoom meeting on April 8th. I sent out the invitation today, and it's being posted. Barbara's already set up the agenda. I sent it to all the counselors, the finance group, Jen and Val and the mayor. If anybody wants to join in, of course you can, but especially the finance committee members. If, if Bill, if you have an issue or pegged with that time, let me know.
Did you give a time, Dan? Did I miss it?
5:30. I want to keep the time as usual, 5:30, April 8th. And I sent out the Zoom meeting. I have to thank Peg because she gave us a great way of learning how to Zoom, so all you chairs, go through that. I did a, a simple meeting with Peg just to make sure I understood how to host a meeting, and I have to compliment our president. She is doing well above her expected, expected duties to do this work. I thank her. I would like to make a motion, because we have to keep government continuing. The motion is to set a public hearing on April 15th for the following items. $800 end departmental transfer for the Board of Health Aliment and Inspection Services. $35,223 for employee share of the January 2020 health insurance premium holiday. $100,000 from free cash to cover the FY '20 snow and ice deficit. $100,000 from free cash to provide funds for the Tax Rate Relief Stabilization Fund. And finally, $75,000 from general stabilization to cover expenses related to COVID-19 resources. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for the aforementioned appropriations and transfers. Do we have any further discussion? Barbara, would you please take a roll call vote?
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Owen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
So those will be public hearings on the next Zoom meeting. They should be quick, there's not a lot of necessary controversy on these things, but we need to keep going because I do expect a budget coming up in May, and those, those hearings will take some time. And I would like to get any end-of-year appropriations and transfers out of the way before we need to move on to the budget public hearings. On that, we will also have an agenda item on the budget at the next meeting, simply to take a look at what the schedule may, may be for our finance committee with regard to hearings on the budget. That concludes, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Next, we move to public safety. Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to schedule a meeting for April 7th at 6:00 PM, and that's conclude.
Okay. Okay. I was just looking at the dates to make sure we didn't need to extend anything. We're good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Next is appointments. Counselor Lynch?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two appointments for consideration this evening. I'll do the first one, Robert Dixon, for the Personnel Director, with a term expiration of 12/31/2022. We met this evening prior to the meeting and had a great conversation with Bob and some little history on him. He has an associate's degree with HCC, bachelor's at UMass, and had some continuing education programs through Harvard. He's worked as a foreman in the Water Sewer Department in West Springfield, spent 50 years as an employee, working with union relations and labor relations. He's currently a mediator between labor unions and, and government agencies. And he's just looking really to get closer to home and, and find a stable job within the community that he resides. Good problem solver. We went through a couple exercises throughout the interview process or whatever, and he came up with some pretty good solutions and, and really thought outside the box in how to, how to work well with both sides of the government and the, the, the workers as well. So he did pass three to zero, where the, the committee recommend him for the approval. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Robert Dixon to the Personnel Director with the term expiration of 12/31/2022. In the form of a motion.
Motion, a second, to approve Robert Dixon as the Personnel Director. I do want to just make one correction. I believe that he actually lives in West Springfield and not in East Hampton. He wanted to get closer to this area of the state, but I don't believe he lives in East Hampton.
No, I said that. I said West Springfield. I said the area.
It sounded like you said he wanted to get close and live to the area he lives in. My apologies. Any further discussion on the motion to approve Robert Dixon? Okay, Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Bill Lynch.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Hi.
Motion has been unanimously approved. Any further appointments, Counselor Lynch?
Yes. We have an additional one, Louise Jacob, for the East Hampton Cultural Council, with the term expiration of 12/31/2022. And quick little email from her. She originally was trained as a journalist and worked on magazines and books and has some publication experience, had a dance minor in college, and has been a part of a lot of shows, operas, et cetera, and things like that. So she has, the, the entertainment or the arts has been a big part of her life. She's lived in East Hampton for about two years. She is mostly retired, as she put it, and wants to make the arts more acceptable to everyone in the community, has some physical restriction, that wants to bring awareness and contribute to ideas to help other residents that may have similar concerns. She wants to add that she has basic familiarity with the arts, and expertise may not be the primary qualifications, but feel that it should allow to have a constant wide range of, of residents within the, the Cultural Council. So that, that's what we had from, from Louise. And then I had one concerned council member that had concerns around working with her. Louise had shown up to a couple meetings, and there were some concerns around the order of the operations within the meeting, and, and the Roberts Rules had to come into play for, for the two meetings that she attended. Just kind of didn't seem to understand the whole thought process and, and organization of the meetings. Felt that because of this, it might be difficult to work side by side, and, and just wanted to raise that concern. So I, I brought that up in the committee meeting, and, and the feeling and the general consensus, and what I felt, we should look at is the fact that, you know, we're volunteers in a community, it is a volunteer board. There are, there is verbiage in the, the charter that states that the mayor can take away an appointment from somebody if she feels deemed necessary. And, and we feel that, you know, give her a shot, and, and if the mayor needs to intervene because it's too much of a disconnection, then, then the mayor has that choice and that right as well. So given all the facts and everything, the committee approved three to zero to appoint Louise to the Cultural Council. So I will make a motion to approve the mayoral appointment for Louise Jacob to the East Hampton Cultural Council with a term expiration of 12/31/2022.
A second.
Motion and a second for the approval of Louise Jacob to the East Hampton Cultural Council. Motion and a second for the approval of Louise Jacob to the East Hampton Cultural Council. Any further discussion? All right, Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Bill Lynch.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Hi.
Motion has been unanimously approved. Louise Jacob is approved. Any further appointments?
There are others on our agenda. We only addressed those two tonight, and we're going to postpone the other eight individual appointments. Our next meeting, I'd like to schedule for 4:15 at 5:00 PM. I will look into sending out and invite to the group. But other than that, thus concludes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Lynch. Ordinance, Council Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. So ordinance has not met since our last meeting, but we are going on April 9th at 5:30. And so I'll Zoom invitation out to the clerk, so she can put that on our agenda and give it out to people.
Council Derby? I'm sorry. When you turn away, hang on, Council Rist. When you turn away, we can't hear you. So if you could keep looking in the direction you're looking, we can hear you that way. I don't know why.
That's weird. I have earbuds in.
I don't know.
So, okay. So I'll look at you. I need, in the form of a motion, to request a 90-day extension to the engine brake ordinance proposal.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to extend the engine brake ordinance proposal for 90 days. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Bill Lynch.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Hi.
Motion passes. Anything else, Council Derby?
Just one other thing. We do have a public hearing scheduled for our next meeting.
You're breaking up again, Council Derby.
Great. I'm running maybe my.
Nope, we lost you.
Great.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. All right. So I need an extension on the open consumption of alcohol. And just 30 days is fine on that, because we have a public hearing at our next meeting, so.
Okay. So you're going to go ahead with the public hearing?
Yeah, I think we, there's no reason not to, now that we can have the public involved, so.
Okay.
Was that in the form of a motion, Salem?
It was in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to extend the proposed open consumption of alcohol and can't, oh, alcohol for 30 days. Barbara? Oh, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? My apologies. Okay, Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Bill Lynch.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you. And just a reminder, next Thursday, 5:30 PM, and we will be discussing our plastic ordinance, as well as the residential setbacks for cannabis. So if you're interested in those issues, tune in.
Was that April 9th, Council Derby?
April 9th.
Thank you.
April 9th at 5:30.
Great. Thank you. Is that all?
That concludes.
Thank you.
That concludes.
Property, Council Zerrit?
Thank you. We have not met since the last meeting. I'm just looking at our two agenda items, the request inventory to be on property.
Council Zerrit, you're also, you're also breaking up. I'm sorry. You're breaking up a little bit?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
At the last meeting, we had moved the hearing for the dog park, I believe, till May. Is that, that's correct?
Correct.
And I'll certainly ask for input from the other committee members, and I know Jeff Baggs on this call, but I think that, couple things. One is, I reached out to John Mason, and there, it does not look like they're meeting this month. I don't know if that's going to change, but their vote on even considering that area off of Williston Avenue behind the cemetery is kind of crucial to even evaluating that property for any sort of discussion, including obtaining schematics, and then be able to deliver those to discussion to a property meeting and having a public hearing on that. So in my opinion, while obviously this has been a pet, pun intended, project of mine, I think it might be in the best interest of the city to really push off this hearing, especially with all the other ingredients that are required to come together. So I think it might be wise to push this until the fall. And I will make a motion that, but I'm just getting out loud here. Jeff, are you still on the call? Okay. So then I will make a motion. I'm just looking at the calendar. Bear with me.
Jeff just unmuted. Maybe he's ready.
Jeff, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
So Jeff, I'm thinking with everything, we have to, we still have to get, I don't, Parks and Rec is not going to meet until May. So that would put us till June at the earliest to be able to have a hearing. And I think there's going to be a lot of other hearings in the meantime, especially regarding the budget and other issues that are going to come up. So I'm considering putting this off until September 2nd. And I wanted to know what your thoughts about that are.
Thank you. I see no issue. You know, our understanding was that the Stanton Grant Foundation, the Stanton Foundation grants aren't accepted on a rolling basis. So I think that, given all the circumstances, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, great. Yeah. And I think this, especially this type of hearing, we really need to make sure that we're back at a point where we can get public input. So then in the form of a motion, I'd like to move the public hearing, which I believe was set for May.
20th.
Thank you, to September 2nd, 2020.
Second.
That's a motion.
Motion and a second to move the public hearing for the review of the property for the municipal dog park from May 20th, 2020 to September 2nd, 2020. Barbara, could we please have a roll call vote?
Comment for discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, for discussion. Thank you.
I think as we vote on this, if we set the hearing that far down the road and we decide to change, we can always move it forward, should for some reason we decide to address an issue sooner. But I think Councilor Zerrit brings up a good point with regard to public input, which is a broader subject, and I'd be happy to discuss this at another point in the meeting. But I think we should face the issue of setting some sort of policy or standards with regard to public hearings with the internet, Zoom, et cetera, as we all begin to get the learning curve up. And many people just are not in with this technology yet. So I think that deserves further discussion. But in regard to September 2nd, I seconded the motion, and I'm pleased to vote on it with the understanding that we could.
Thank you. Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Hi.
Motion unanimously passes. Anything else, Council Zerrit?
Yes, I'll be reaching out to the other members of the committee, Council Kuzinski and Council Rothschild, in regards to setting a Zoom meeting, discuss our other agenda item, which I'd like to, I'd like to get into and at least develop a plan of how we're going to tackle it. It's kind of nebulous right now. So I will be sending an email this evening to coordinate, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Council Zerrit. Rules and government relations, Council Peak?
Thank you, Madam President. So on our agenda right now, we have the administrative order, which I believe we set a public hearing for next meeting. So that will still happen. We have two rules, which I'm actually going to want to probably chat with you, Madam President, about when you'd like to sort of discuss those. I was a little hesitant to bring them forward until we had a Zoom meeting to make sure that, because I do anticipate that there's going to be a good deal of discussion. And I just wanted to, like last time with the teams, it was just stressful. So I wanted to make sure that we had this down before we had that debate. I'm up for doing it next meeting, if that's what we want, and I'll get every, all the paperwork set with Barb. But also, if the number of public hearings that we have ends up taking the, I don't think any of them are especially time sensitive. And then we have Councilor Lynch's resolution, which I'm very interested to start discussing. I did speak briefly with Councilor Lynch, who, as you are probably aware, is one of the people who is involved in making sure that we all have food right now, and as such is a little busy and stressed. I wanted to make sure that he could make a meeting with the rules meeting, because I don't think that a big, high-profile resolution is something that you should discuss without the sponsor present. So we haven't nailed down a time yet, but I'm, that's an ongoing conversation, and I hope to get back to the members soon. Yes, Dan?
Madam President, may I?
Oh, Council Rist, yes.
Council Peak, in my opinion, this pilot program is an excellent idea. Will not affect this year's budget. It's going to take some time to come up with the resolution and get all the players, the nonprofits in town, who will probably want to speak to it. So I don't think it's urgent that we get it done before, say, July 1. And I'm just bringing that up because I think we need to make sure that all of the players involved have adequate time to come to us and give us their opinion. And hopefully, that could be not a Zoom meeting, maybe later on this summer, when we're able to meet again. However, I don't mean to say that we should put it off. They could certainly join a meeting. But I think it's very important that all the players involved, as Councilor Lynch has brought in a number of different nonprofit organizations besides Williston that want to speak to it, I think we need to make sure they can. So that's just my opinion. If we have to wait until July or August to talk about it, I think it's okay, because such a resolution, and if money does come forward, it'll impact, that money might go into, say, the tax stabilization account or whatever for next year. So that's just my opinion on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rist. In the conversation I had with Councilor Lynch, we were on this, we were on the same page, that this isn't something that's necessarily time sensitive. I wouldn't mind to start discussing it early, because I have a feeling that when we start talking about it, it'll raise a bunch of questions that we'll have to look into. That's how these things tend to go. So I wouldn't mind talking about it before July, but I don't think it necessarily has to be in the next two weeks if we can't find a time that works for Councilor Lynch.
Okay, I would agree with that.
I agree.
Okay, and that concludes.
Thank you, Council Peak. Does, Council Peak, do you have any report that you would like to make on the ranked choice voting?
Um, I just got a text from the chair, which I have not responded to yet, that being Dan Gilbert, who feels that now that we've got the Zoom stuff set up, it would be appropriate for us to meet this month. We did not meet last month, because our meeting happened about a week after this, everything started locking down, and we just weren't prepared yet. But I, I actually, I was going to reach out to Barb and to Owen after this about that. But my hope is that we will meet this month, and we have gotten some interesting correspondences via Barb from our vendor about sort of the cost of the system, and even showing what some sample ballots could look like. We haven't really met since we got that stuff, so I don't have much to say, other than that the vendor who supplies our machines seems capable of doing this.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Council Peak. And that is the end of our committee reports. That was so many hands. Let me start with Barb, because I haven't heard from you today.
Okay, actually, back under finance, Dan, I'm seeing that you have one thing that needs to be extended, the review of salaries and stipends.
Okay, I make a motion to extend the salaries and stipends for 90 days.
Second.
Motion and a second to extend review of salaries and stipends by 90 days. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Bill Lynch.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you, Barbara, for catching that.
Okay. Council Rist, I saw your hand.
I just wanted to take a moment. It's unfortunate during this pandemic that we can't do a better job of it. But I want to thank DPW Director Joe Pachinski, and I've always had trouble pronouncing his name, so I'm going to call him Joe P. He has been an incredible professional in all my 24 years as a counselor, interacting with him and having to deal with many, many issues in Department of Public Works, all of the enterprise fund issues that he's brought forward. He has been able to answer our questions quite well. And 35 years is a long time of dedicated service to our city. And I, for one, and I know the councilors will also agree, he deserves our thanks, and I wish we could do better for him. But he's been around for a long time, and he deserves his retirement. So thank you, Joe, and good luck.
Here, here. Thank you, Dan, Council Rist. Did I see another hand, that someone wanted to speak before? Council Zerrit?
Oh, oh, sorry. Just more of a procedural question. So at our last meeting, we approved the warrant for the special election for March 31st, which has passed. But do we procedurally need to do anything in regards to that, which has now been moved to May? And obviously, the election didn't happen. Is there anything?
I'll defer to the city clerk on that question.
Yeah. What I've been told is that the warrants that were signed, because the legislature changed the date, it just rolls over to the new one, just like the ballots, you know, absentees, everything just rolls over. So I don't think that you have to do a new warrant. If I find out that you do, I will give it to you.
Okay. All right. I will take a motion to adjourn.
motion moved.
And I'm going to take a, do we have a second?
Second.
And I'll take a voice vote on this one. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you for the public participating. Thank you so much.
Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you. I care.